Shut the fuck up.
All right, take two. Meeting called on today is Tuesday, April eighth. I got that far. Uh, town council, public, uh, public hearing, uh, town council chambers, eleven seventy Main Street. Jay, lead us to prayer.
We ask for the wisdom to make good decisions, to speak with confidence and listen with compassion, and to work together to create a better way of life for the people of West Water. Amen.
Mark, please, I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, our nation, our God, and his love, liberty, and justice for all.
Call Councilman Dennison.
Here.
Councilman Luchardi of Action. Councilman Messier.
Yeah.
Council Vice President Williamson.
Yeah.
Council President Rockland.
Here.
Form is declared. Public hearing on proposed fiscal year twenty twenty six municipal budget.
Good evening. So I'll repeat a majority of what I've said at the last few meetings with some minor updates. We've already had our public workshops, which started the public process of reviewing and vetting the FY twenty twenty six budget as presented by the respective department heads and the town manager. During these first two Tuesdays in April, we've held the public hearings where the council will make adjustments to this proposal left to considering public comment and welcome input. Our department heads continue to be considerate of the town's fiscal constraints and the fluctuating status of the economy while drafting requests that will support the continuation of services expected by our community and provide for the upgrading of infrastructure necessary to offer those services safely and more efficiently. I'd like to acknowledge the hard work of our finance director, Kristen Bonoy, in producing this proposal with me and keeping us on a reasonable and conservative path. Our recent budget processes continue to be affected by the uncertainty of the finalized state budget, federal funding sources, the national economy, inflation fluctuations, and rising supply cost. How these all affect our FY twenty twenty six revenue and expenditure planning remains a work in progress. Some key budget points, some of which were from my original proposal and some which are now upgrades since we're, it's about a month since we last submitted that proposal. Our total budget increase is approximately five point nine million dollars. That's inclusive of approximately one point eight million dollars in municipal expenses, three point one million dollars for school state aid pass-through appropriation, and a request to increase the local school department appropriation by a little more than nine hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. The levy increase that has been adjusted to include the most recent um, valuations after some appeals and tangible returns is approximately three point nine nine percent or a little more than two point seven million dollars. The approximate tax increase, considering those adjustments, at this point is two point seven five percent tax rate increase. And again, that still may fluctuate slightly as other annual tangible annual returns come back and tax revaluation appeals get finalized. Capital expenditure requests totaling a little more than one point two million dollars have been eliminated in my proposal with the hope of restoring several key needs if funds become available or federal, state, and private grants and aid gets awarded. Upper funds are no longer available. We have fully transitioned into the employee retirement system of Rhode Island. Rates provided by ERSRI have been applied to all pensionable salary types within their respective departments. Legacy plan employer rates have increased for FY twenty six. We, in the original proposal, we had a five point two percent anticipated increase in our healthcare working rates. The transition to the Rhode Island inter-local trust for healthcare management has been successful. Not worthy of changing, the rates have, in the proposal, our rates have come in with healthcare being five point six six percent and dental coming in at five point oh seven. The seven point five percent increase was applied to our property and liability insurance premiums over the FY point five rates. The increase to workers' comp is due to a slight increase in our experience modification for FY twenty six. Work-related injury expense is also in this line as well. Proposal that I submitted has a tax collection rate of ninety-seven point zero percent. There is no planned use for fund balance in my FY twenty six proposal. The one thing I held out and saved for last, I know, has raised a few questions. So I'll read what I originally stated, and if you want me to go into it a little deeper to try to make it more clear, I will. Funds that were reserved for anticipated collective bargaining salary adjustments for unionized staff and salary adjustments for non-union personnel in the FY twenty five budget still need to be proportionally dispersed this month, the start of the fourth quarter, which we'll do at, we're, we're supposed to do at the April twenty second meeting. The salary and related accounts in this FY twenty six proposal will appear disproportionate until then. If you want me to try to explain that a little more clearly, I will, since I know.
Could you give us an example?
Certainly. So if, if you go back to this time last year, we were operating under the fiscal twenty-three budget, preparing fiscal, operating on the fiscal twenty-four budget, preparing fiscal twenty-five. We were in contract negotiations, collective bargaining with all three unions. So the proposal that we were looking at last year did not have any salary adjustments in the various salary line items. There was some amount of money that was reserved in a general government account in anticipation of some of those salaries, which I just mentioned, we wanted to disperse, properly disperse that amount in the fourth quarter, which just started April first, and that will happen at the April twenty second meeting. So the proposal that you have before you, considering tonight FY twenty six, has the benefit of knowing what those raises were back then and also what the raises are going forward, starting July first. So what you're looking at tonight shows two more years of salary increases, adjustments, as opposed to what you've last considered, because one year was a lump sum in a general government line. If that makes more sense.
So if I, if I, just because my head's a little, so if two years ago someone's salary was a hundred dollars and ultimately we agreed upon a three percent raise, their salary should be in the FY twenty-five budget one oh three.
Correct.
But it's not. It's still one hundred until we make the adjustment. So when you look at the FY twenty-six budget, it might appear as though it's a six dollar raise, because if it was three and three, it's now one oh six in the twenty-six budget compared to one hundred in the twenty-five budget, because we haven't updated to one oh. So it looks like a six dollar increase, but it only would be a three dollar increase. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Basically, if we were doing this in another three weeks and that money had already been allocated at that point, we would see a different salary.
If we updated.
Right.
This whole booklet.
Right.
With, with that information.
Okay, I got it. I know that was one of my questions here today. I, I was pretty sure I understood where you were coming from, but I think you just really slipped. I appreciate it.
So again, in conclusion, um, I know it's a lot of hard work. We've had some updated um, numbers um, and another month of historical data that Chris and I have discussed, so we'd be comfortable with some additional recommendation, recommendations, should you care, care to hear them from us. Other than that, we look forward to continue to collaborate with you all to craft a budget that's responsible to provide the services that are expected of us.
Any questions for Mark here before I, I have a couple things I just want to cover real quick. Um, one, I apologize if I happened to walk out. I, I'm in the same boat. I have a family emergency possibly going on, so if I have to step out, I'm sorry. Um, secondly, Councilman Luchardi, um, he's not here tonight, but he did put together an email that he would like to be read in the public by myself. He said, "I'm not able to attend tonight's public hearing. I have a family commitment that is just as important, and I am a father as well as a councilman. I believe that this year's vote is critical and can actually set the tone for the future years. We can't ignore the school bond possibility and future school employees that will be needed to fill critical positions and future employees, employee increases that will be before us next year and the year after. I've stated at some point a few weeks ago that I would like to be at one percent or less for a tax increase. A one percent is still difficult to those who have no other source of income or have worked all their lives to enjoy retirement and incur the rise in payments for electric, insurance, food, medical, and everything else needed to survive. This department, in parentheses, also has to be considered in our discussion. After listening at both budget presentations, in the first public hearing, I have narrowed down some possible adjustments for the council for discussion points to consider tonight. One, increasing late fees from twelve to fifteen percent, not filling vacant positions, holding Saturday bulk pickups one time per month rather than two in doing second bulk during normal business hours Monday through Friday. In parentheses, to me, this is simply just a schedule and adjustment. Using a portion of our cash reserve, we had one point one million dollars in surplus last year. The portion suggested is two hundred and fifty thousand, which gives us a eight hundred and fifty thousand surplus from last year. Keep in mind that was voted on to be spent last year. Given the school department a portion of what is being asked for round numbers, give them seven hundred and forty-one thousand of the nine hundred and ninety-one thousand that was requested, leaving two hundred and fifty thousand not to be given. I find that we will be having to tighten our budget for the next few years, in like council president has said already that we've had some good years and times are going to be tough. Please understand that there is only so much money in the pot, and relying on the taxpayers for a significant amount each year could not continue. Signed, Jason Luchardi. So I just want to point that out. I read that in the record for him while he's out with his family matters. So. Um, I know I sent an email. I had some of that in there this morning. I think I sent it to town manager Kristen and Mary Beth first thing in the morning, and then I forwarded it throughout to each council member singly so they know what I had sent over as suggestions. And again, I think some of that is in there, some of it's not. Um, I'm just going to point out the differences from what I had sent over. And again, I apologize that I didn't have a printed, you know, because I was planning on being here. I guess Mary Beth has a printed form. Thank you. Um, and, and Mark sends out a weekly update, and I know one of the suggestions was bumping collections up to ninety-seven point three five. I asked, why not ninety-seven point five? Because we are historically high in that area. Also, did we get a revenue guest estimate in moving late fees from twelve percent to fifteen or eighteen effective July one twenty-five? A resolution would have to be done to do that, I think. What positions are currently vacant in the town? Um, with all automation, Dropbox, open positions being considered in cut, I hear we may be doing more with less already. A question that has come up is July one department head increases across the board. I thought it was three percent, but I could be wrong. Um, but Mike, because my budget was actually, I left it here last time. But yes, that is right. It is uh, by three percent. Um, if no open positions have been considered, what has been considered? I know there is a freeze. How can a position be cut in a contract, either currently or vac, currently vacant or filled? I would prefer vacant. If not vacant, we really need to assess our office needs and wants. Also, looking at our surplus using three hundred and fifty K, um, what would that do? I'm not a fan of doing this, um, but I also understand that the budget needs to be under two percent. So, you know, that's my email to the town manager and the rest of the council this morning. Um, you know, exploring more options, because here we are in final aspects of this budget. So. Um, I know it's tough decisions. What's right for the town, what's right for the taxpayer, what's, you know, we have to look at it all and, you know. I, and again, this is a public hearing, but I just wanted everybody to know that that's the two communications that I know of, and I know Mary Beth's had some conversations with others and town manager, and I know, Mark, I know you've been quiet on a lot of things. So that's where we stand, but we're going to go into public here, and any public comments or questions on the budget? And we go back to the council once that's done. Any public? No, I hear the grunts.
Good evening. I basically just have some questions.
Just state your name and address, I'll write it down.
John Reed, sixty-two Andrews Avenue. Um, one of the things I can't find, I'm sure it's here somewhere, is we have, I believe substantial revenue from uh, details. Where is that money distributed?
Special revenue fund.
Special revenue fund?
They use that to buy their police vehicles, so they don't put that on the taxpayer. Uh, they just used it to do their whole dispatch console upgrade there. Um, I think that was almost six hundred thousand. They did not have to use taxpayer money for that.
No, no, I know it's a revenue.
Yeah, it's in the special revenue.
Find it in.
Not in the general.
In the police. That's where I would think it would be.
You know, it's a special revenue, but it's not part of the general fund.
Well, that kind of helps the police department take care of it all, which is a good thing. The reimbursement line on that for uh, SRO, I take it that's from the school?
Correct.
Last time I was up here, I spoke about this, and at the end of the day, it still doesn't make sense to me. This should have to do with legal and the judgment settlements. Previous years, there was adopted numbers, okay? Whether they went under or above, that's not a discussion for tonight, but that was a line item in there. This year, it's not, it doesn't show there. That only tells me one thing. You know that line's going to get filled with something, and it looks like the average is over a hundred thousand dollars. Right now, into two twenty-five budget, you adopted one oh six, eight seventy-five. Through three eleven, you've already spent one thirty-one, eight seventy-five.
So we, we budgeted the hundred and six because we had a known settlement that was going to be spread over four years. So we knew that. We knew that that was coming. There was an additional one that we settled in a smaller amount this year. We didn't know when that was going to get settled, if it was going to get settled. So usually we budget if we know that there has been a settlement, and we definitely have. We don't want to put something that we don't know on the taxpayer. We don't know if there's any other settlements coming down the road. This one is done. The, the one for a hundred and sixty-eight seventy-five, the last one was fiscal year twenty-five.
So portion of that makes sense to me. My next question is, okay, we get a hundred thousand dollar settlement. Where's that money going to come from?
It would have to come from um, either the difference between our revenues and our expenses, so it would come out of our surplus. Or if we broke even that year, then it would come out of our fund balance, which is basically.
And our surplus is what roughly?
Um, they vary from, yeah, this past year, fiscal year twenty-four, it was one point one million dollars. We just did really well with revenues, especially the um, investment income. We did, we invested wisely.
I guess in my mind, that somewhat works. The security, I mean, the crossing that thing, we already straightened that out last week. It's in two different areas, but it needs to get subtracted from somewhere.
The school will, can adjust their budget, take it out of their budget. I think they're not paying for it anymore.
All right. My next question is, on the fire and police, you have fleet maintenance. Does that go to DPW mechanics?
I think some of it. It's the cost of the parts for the vehicles that were on each department.
But the services of fixing them is under DPW mechanics? Okay. So mechanics salary without overtime benefits are on the nervous stuff, a little over half a million dollars. Does DPW get reimbursed from the police department, the fire department, for their services to other department vehicles?
No.
Pay two to whatever.
Not for their, no, not for their time, no. Their, their job is to fix the town vehicles. It's the cost of the supplies that is.
Yeah, you've got pots and so forth.
To the different departments, but the time is not.
I would just think that if it was service, because a lot of other things are transferable, and just in my mind, it makes sense that if the fire department had something fixed, that that labor cost would wind up to the DPW. And according to this, the pots and everything, they pay for them themselves, so it's, um, this is an operational thing that I didn't understand. Like I said, you know, half a million dollars for mechanics, it's, it's without overtime.
How many mechanics do we have? We couldn't be higher in mechanics, because.
Oh, no, it's a hard thing to fill. I, I understand.
No, I, I don't, I don't. Listen, if it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand for four mechanics each, I, I kind of find that hard to believe, so I just want to clarify.
Salary is two sixty-two. The big chunk is two of them are in the legacy nurse plan and their pension.
Yeah, he said just in salary was a half million. I don't, I don't, I don't think that's true. It's salary.
With benefits?
Salary and benefits is five thirty-three.
Okay, all right. So, and, and John, I, I know, because that's one position we had trouble filling in fifty-something thousand dollars a year.
Like I said, I'm not looking at any of this, and I'll repeat myself from the last meeting. I don't see where anybody in there is overpaid, okay? Give or take, but I mean, I'm a, you know, fire, police, DPW, when you break down their hours, I don't see that as a lot.
I just want to buy the mechanics tomorrow, not going to do a line for a job for a hundred and twenty-five thousand, but that's not it.
Maybe, maybe he did a good advertising. But at this point, I'm, you know, I'm not going to ask later on. I am really curious going forward, how this benefit package breaks down.
I'm going to tell you the biggest chunk is the legacy pension. Our, our for fiscal year twenty-five, for fiscal year twenty-six is eleven point seven four million dollars, eleven million seven forty thousand dollars. So that, that, that arc is not going to go away for years, and it's going to, it's going to get spread out between fewer and fewer employees, because as people retire and we bring in new people, they're going in the new mers. So when you see the, the ones that have smaller benefit in salaries, those people are in new mers. And the, the difference between old mers and new mers is staggering.
I would say.
So that is the biggest chunk of what you see in the benefit section.
And found the pain for sins of the past, but it's life.
We certainly are.
Another question. Library. Their gas bill for the year is nine thousand dollars. I'll, I'll take that. Their electric bill is forty-five thousand.
That's their portion of the wind turbines.
That's not, yeah, that's.
And it's not a bill.
So our electric, when you see all our electricity bills, that is their portion to pay back on the bond for the turbines, which is on our tenth.
Uh, we, fiscal year twenty-six would probably be about our tenth year. It was twenty-six.
It's a twenty-year bond, I know, correct? So within nine years, you're going to see that, nine to ten years, you'll see that adjust on the budget.
Congress told me, it said electricity is forty-five thousand.
Based on usage.
Without the explanation, I'm saying this doesn't make any sense.
We, we never pay an electric bill, and we actually have built up credits over the years, as David said. We have a bond payment that is due every, every year, and it's based on, so if uh, if the library uses ten percent, they get ten percent of the bond payment. If the next year they use twelve, it goes up a little bit. So.
And with that being said, with, you look at electricity ten years ago, where it is today, average home was eighty to ninety dollars ten years ago, and everybody was questioning us, well, average homes are three hundred now. So I think the town did a very smart thing, because our bond payment is the same based upon interest, but uh, our electric bill stays the same, so we're pretty steady on that.
Yeah, the new uh, electric commission and the new company did a real good job to us with uh, distribution and supply and all the other major stuff they wanted to throw in there.
So, so the departments have virtually no control over what that electric number is.
But that's a line item and not being privy to.
Fair enough.
You look at electric, forty-five thousand dollars. Not knowing the reasoning behind it, that's a big number.
And no, Colin, you're not getting any of that back, okay?
Thank you most of my questions. I'm just going to say the same thing again. I understand you've got to run the town. Town has to be efficient. Don't hurt any more of the elderly than they're already getting hurt, because, I'll say it again, thirty-five dollar increase, fifty dollar increase, I couldn't care less. I'll go make it tomorrow morning on top of what we do. Those people are fixed. Thirty-five dollars is like a two thousand to me. And everything on that side that they can't control is going up. And in my opinion, they've already paid their dues to this town, a lot of them. They've already been paying their taxes for years when they were working. Why should they be nailed to the cross when they're rounding third base? I think that's a conscience that you have to live with. You all have neighbors, you all have family. Somehow, you know, the budget balances, but that's, that's easy to do. It's just numbers, so it comes out of the bottom line again, right? I could do that all day long. But somewhere along the line, and this is just my opinion, how I do things, two and a half to five percent uh, departmental budget decrease, I would have asked, had the departments do and bring them to me. I broke it down myself. A lot of departments at five percent is not a lot of money to take back. And in working role, when you work with this numbers, I don't think five percent is a lot of money. But unless you mandate that your departments hand you something, it may not even work. But that's when you know, okay, five percent hurts DPW. You have a meeting. You say, whoa, this is going to really hurt our operation. It gives it the direct the time to explain to the town manager, okay, five percent is too much for you. What about two and a half? But when you don't stop with a benchmark, in my opinion, I mean, you run this company, I run mine. If you don't stop with a benchmark and see how far you can stretch it, how do you come up with a number? I mean, you can just fill the gaps. Fill the gaps is easy. You took like three years, okay, bup, 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 you put the number in there. But in order, if it was me, I would have had them do it. Sit with the town manager. If it hurts, okay, explain to me where it hurts. Maybe it's not a five percent for this department. Maybe it's a two. But if you don't get to where it hurts, you never know where you can live. But those people that you're going to tax are already hurt.
I, I have two comments on that. I, I think, I'll let the manager speak for himself, but I, I know for a fact that he's had all his department heads in his office to discuss the budget. So that's, that is one thing that I, I know he has. I know the council has year over year continued to try to keep, you know, everybody keeps talking about what the taxpayer voted for years ago was four percent, four percent, four percent, and we as a council push back on our. Pushed back on our managers in the past and, and even said, we wanna stay below four percent, we don't wanna authorize four percent, so. And the other thing about our budget is probably about ninety percent, ninety two percent is already fixed, it's payroll, benefits. And pension, we have eight to ten percent to play with, and to figure out where we wanna cut it up on that budget. That is the toughest part, and yes, we did vote for contracts, yes, we voted for, uh. Increases for the employees, and we, we talked about those increases here in public when we, we made it clear. That our budget's gonna go up, three percent, no matter what, every year, just on the payroll side. Three to six percent, depending on how many, depending on the contract, that it's going to go up that much, we made it clear in public that that is going to happen. And we, and John, you say it, you said it, our employees are not overpaid by no means. Um, are there some benefits in there, like longevity or whatever, that, that might help them even more? That's the stuff that you, you might not really see in, in employees payroll, is their longevity, so somebody walking in the door here on year one. They don't have longevity, it's year five, they stop, like. Four or five, and as, the longer they stay here, the, the more longevity, and I. I've always had my discussions with employees here, like, I, I come from a private industry. I, I believe that if I've been somewhere twenty five years, the person walking in the door the same day as me, doesn't get the same rate of pay as me. But that's how it works, like down in DPW, like if, if the, if, uh. A laborer gets twenty two dollars, I'm just throwing numbers out there, laborer gets twenty two dollars, he's been here for ten years, he's making twenty two dollars. The person comes in at that, that rate, basically what's on the contract, the rate on the contract. So, I don't agree with it, you know, I believe in, but that's where the longevity comes in, but. There's, there's, we have ten to, like I said, ten percent to figure out what to, what to deal with. And, you know, I, when, uh, we had a sewer meeting last time, I heard from Tony saying they had twenty eight percent to, to play with, I was like, wow, you got a lot more to play with to reach. So, it's, it's one of those things that. What services do you want? You know, the, when somebody asks me, cut this, cut that, what services don't you want? You know, and, and I, I've been here long enough to see, you cut fire, God forbid, something happens. It's their fault, it's our fault, please, you don't have enough people patrol on the streets, this town's not safe. Kids not educated, they're our future, you know, so we have to look at many different aspects of it, I know it's not easy. And yet, I think all of us are up here taxpayers, so we also look at it that way also, and, and some, some people up here are retired, they, you know, it's. You're not gonna, it's hard to satisfy everybody, and I, I heard, you know, I just asked, inquired, we have some elderly people. I think two now remaining in the town that are on a tax freeze from the nineties. That when, when the town did inst- institute the tax freeze, and I think, what gave it that stop, that was in ninety eight, ninety seven, something like that. It was one of them, it was in the mayors were here, actually, so it might have been in ninety two, ninety three. But they're still here today on a tax freeze, God bless, like, I, I, I was doing the math in my head, sixty five, thirty years has gone by. You know, I'm like ninety five to a hundred and five years old, depending on when, when, I'm like, are, are they still here, and they are. They are, there's two, two residents that are on the tax freeze. I, I bought my grandma's house in Coventry, it was on tax freeze, day I closed, I was like, great, my taxes are on eighteen hundred. Three days later, Coventry sent me the new bill, it was forty two hundred, it was because she was on a tax freeze. So, and, and they don't, a lot of towns are looking at getting away from the tax freeze, which is unfortunate and it's hard to do. But again, then you look, okay, we tax freeze the elderly, and then you got a twenty two year old coming in, buying a house. Struggling, and they're like, well, why am I paying for that one, why am I paying for that one, so we, we get that. You know, years ago, we talked about multifamilies, we hit three family in a bubble, twenty five percent tax increase one year. With basically evaluation and everything else. And, and we had the multifamily owners in here yelling at us. But, that's how it goes, I mean, we, we have a tiered system here, which not too many communities have, if you're not aware of it. Some towns have one system, no matter what your house value is, whether it's two family, three family, it's one tax rate. We have a tiered tax rate, we try to keep the single family down as low as possible, two family owner occupying as low as possible. You look at the tax rates on multifamily, they're seven, eight, nine, some are even more than ten dollars per thousand than what a single family is, so. I, 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 not, that's, I'm giving councils through the years credit, not, before I was here, you know, they came up with a tiered taxes, you know, how do you fix it? We get away from the tiered tax system, I can guarantee everybody's taxes are going to drop drastically, and some are gonna come down, but it, it's. It's about a nice deal.
So. This is the least, my least favorite part of this, this job that I've taken out here, um, it's, it's really because. Like Dave said, and like many people have said, there are people who can adjust to. A, a small tax increase a lot easier than some others who aren't fixed incomes and whatnot. Um, I, I think, instead of focusing on a number, a, a, a percentage of an increase, whether it's two point seven five, two point seven, two point three, eight, one percent. The way I look at it is, have we done everything we can possibly do in the interest of the taxpayer, financially speaking? Are we being fair to them? And by fair, it's not giving them the lowest tax increase that we can, because it's gonna be an increase, it's not gonna be a give back, but. Are we also being fair by giving them all the services that they've, they've come to deserve? So there's a fine line there, um, I know in the school department, they've done a lot to get off of their original, uh, need number. Which was over five million, right Karen, it was over five million, and it's down to under one. And they did that with some pain, they had to, to look at cutting some positions and some other things, and, and there are. You know, a lot of us were up at the high school during that meeting, and there were a lot of upset folks who may potentially face a permanent layoff. It's not easy, it's something we have to do, um, I, I still, with that being said, I think there's still work to be done on the town's side of the budget at least. Again, I'm not gonna be so bold as to go line by line and say, I think you should cut here, I think you should cut there. We have a very capable town manager who has very capable department heads. My big ask from them is to make sure that they go and look at their budgets line by line. And maybe it is bringing it to that point of pain where, okay, we can do this. It might affect me over here, but I can deal with that by managing a situation, whatever it might be, and that's with the understanding, like, like the council president said. We're not playing with a hundred percent budget here, i- it's eight to ten percent that we can actually manipulate and move around, everything else is already spoken for, so with that being said. I'm not in love with the two point seven five number, I, I'm, I'm gonna be honest with that, I don't like that, um, I think, again. Folks like myself, still, still bringing in a, a monthly paycheck, uh, have the ability to go out and earn when I need to. It's a different story, but there are a lot of people in this town that aren't in that position, so I think we have to look towards them. And, you know, I, I, to be honest with you, Dave, I didn't even think about the folks who are just trying their hardest to start their lives off. In, in purchasing a home and everything that goes along with that, they have it way harder today. Than we did thirty years, forty years, twenty years, whatever it might be, so we have to protect those folks too, because they are the future of our town as well. Um, so I would just ask, you know, take another hard look. I'm, I'm, uh, I'm not all jazzed up about the two point seven five percent, and again, it's not really about the number with me, it's when. The manager and his department heads can come to us and say, we have absolutely. Done our best to wring water out of this stone, and then I will be satisfied, and we'll move forward with whatever we need to do. Anybody else?
You hit, you hit most of the things in your email that you read today, man, the one, the one that I, I had marked down when we first did the talks was the, um. The adjustment for the, uh, tax collection here.
So I have some proposal, do you want?
Yeah, I, I actually had asked, yeah, if you, you could, I mean, we talked about, um, ninety seven point three five. I, I think, keeping in mind in a year that we're doing a, a revow, it's a very dangerous game to play, because you don't know. Really what you're gonna collect, um, keeping in mind that after July one, when tax bills go out. People may still come in and ask for their, um, taxes to be reviewed, so it could affect it, so. But I think there is room, although I'm always very conservative, to, to move that ninety seven number up. I think you read in yours.
Ninety seven five.
I, I would even ask you, so if, if we go to ninety seven, five, six, seven, eight, if you know what that would be, because I believe you. I think you did provide, and thank you, uh, that we'd been able to collect ninety eight percent typically. Um, so, I would not go to ninety eight, I think especially in a year, um, where we're doing the revow, and there's so much uncertainty, but if you have some numbers, that would be good.
So I, I wanted to propose, um, some adjustments to revenue with, um, more.
Which is really the same thing, right? Think about it, um, you're doing, if you do it, if you increase revenue, you're also increase the collection number, you're kind of double dipping, but go ahead.
Well, no, it's revenues, uh, that decrease the, um, what we're taxing.
Okay.
So other revenues decrease the tax away. So, uh, I'm looking at, um, the investment incre- in, investment interest. Um, based on what we've been receiving, and the fact that interest rates are still hovering in the four percent area. Um, I was comfortable in moving investment interest up another fifty K to, um, to three hundred thousand. Oh, no, wait, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one, scratch that, reverse that, I did not say that, um, that was, investment income, I was gonna book twenty five thousand. To two seventy five, that's, that's. Much as I'll let go of my conservativeness. The interest on tax, um, delinquent taxes. I know that there's been discussion about bringing that from twelve to either fifteen or eighteen percent, and we looked back. We saw that it was eighteen percent in nineteen ninety two, by two thousand twelve, we know it was twelve percent, but we couldn't figure out where and when it changed.
Two thousand ten-ish, ten, twelve-ish.
Okay.
It was done, um, it was, Councilman Bedouar at the time was the one who proposed, proposed it. And I thought we did it by resolution here in the council chambers, but.
It looks like.
Off Mark's notes here, it looks like it was done at the town financial meeting. As a warrant and an ordinance, so we'll have to see if we can find that. I thought we did it here, we voted on it as a council, maybe to bring it before the holders, that might have been it, but, um. One of the big things was, at the time, you know, it was. Things weren't as lucrative, there was a, kind of like a somewhat of a recession going on, and we had a lot of. People that, you know, said, hey, I'm never gonna get caught up at eighteen percent, but what can we do, we talked about bringing our way down to six at one time. But, you, you look at intro, and again, I, I know I've had a con- conversation with, I think, Councilman Luchardi on this. Is, it's the same way I feel about sewer, and the same way I feel about taxes. The person who's here on, uh, July fifteenth to pay their taxes, all shot in one year, they ask, why don't I get a reward for paying everything all upfront? You know, like a one percent reward or whatever. And then I'm sitting there saying, okay, people who come here and pay their taxes on time, get really no reward except for no late fees. But the people who are constantly late, and we all see, it's, it's, sometimes it's on there for business reasons why they're, we understand it. They have their own ways of moving their money around and doing whatever, we all get a, a, a late collection, we get the tax, uh, letter from Rose every. Three months, maybe every quarter, basically telling us who's delinquent, the list is pretty high. But why are we punishing the person who's paying on time? And helping the person who's not paying on time, I know it's, you're gonna have your different situations, don't get me wrong, you might have that ugly person that might not have the dollar to pay for it. But, you know, maybe it's more that it helps the collection rate to ninety nine percent, because they don't wanna pay that eighteen percent. So I, I look at it as, we're not getting the interest here, but we're gonna get a higher collection rate, so how do we do it, and, and, you know?
Buying this old resolution, it looks like it was, that, the resolution we passed when we're passing the budget, the levy, and it's written down here that it was twelve percent, so I think. Kind of like a resolution, but it's almost like the budget resolution that we do.
Yeah. And. It's the levy resolution.
The levy, the levy resolution.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is two thousand twelve, Angelo signed it as council president, so.
So, based on that, if we work on increasing, what you decided to implement, so I propose going back up to the, um, five hundred thousand, so go up by fifty thousand on the. Interest for the penalties for that, um, also comfortable going up on the building, uh. Revenue by fifty thousand and, um, adding another twenty five thousand from tax sale fees that we collect. So that would be a total adjustment to revenues of a hundred and fifty thousand. If you're, if you're amendable to that, then I have some scenarios, uh, with different collection rates. And what the tax rate increase would be, and the levy increase would be based on the hundred.
If you're comfortable. Because if you're not, it's not, don't put it in a number that, that we, it's a make believe number.
I, I, I can live with you, well, you know I'm conservative.
Okay.
So, you know, having a few extra months of data to look at and see what, and also see that things haven't really changed much. For interest rates, they're not plummeting at this time, um. We're locked in on a lot of stuff, so, um, I'm comfortable.
I would say, I, I would absolutely say, I, I mean, do you need a motion to do that?
Yeah, not, like, do you need a motion to accept my proposal?
Motion to accept Kristen's proposal to increase revenue by a hundred and fifty thousand, twenty five for investment interest, uh, twenty five on fees on late. I mean, fifty on fees on late, that building revenue by fifty and tax sale fees by twenty five.
Yeah, I can hear her, before we do that, can you hear? I'd go piece by piece, actually, cause you might get overwhelmed with.
Yeah.
All the information, because it looks like she has a lot, based off the.
Typically, well, we could, I mean, we can go back and change it if we need to.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
You have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, so a hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in revenues.
Okay, so based on that. If we stayed at ninety seven percent, the tax rate increase would be two point five, three percent, levy would be three point eight percent. If we went to ninety seven point three five percent collection rate, we would, it would, the tax rate increase would be two point one oh. And the levy increase would be three point four one. If we ventured to ninety seven point five percent in the collection rate, we would be at a one point nine six percent increase in the tax rate. And three point two nine percent on the levy, and I even went as far as ninety seven point seven percent. Uh, collection rate would, would bring us to a one point seven five tax rate increase and three point oh eight percent on the levy.
But does that make sense?
Which one?
No, the final one you said.
Ninety seven point seven.
Collection, so.
And that would be without any cuts, without any other adjustment?
That would be, right now strictly with the adjustment of adding the other revenues, which decreases what we need for tax.
Yeah, I mean, I feel strongly about getting under two, one seems a little more.
Yeah, I, I, one, one would be almost to get to, and I'm not sure that, given the fact that we know that we have, um, contractual increases more than that.
Well, I just wanna point out, nine hundred ninety one thousand is over one percent.
And, 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 I will, I, I thought, actually. I, in good conscience, would not vote for reducing that at this point in time, the schools have done. A great deal of work, um, they cut over three million dollars from their original budget. They cut positions to.
We just sat at that meeting two weeks ago.
That's right, it, it was obvious that there's need, and, and. Credit to the schools, to Karen and her team and the school committee, they don't come and ask when they don't need it, and it's clear that there are a lot of unknowns, um. I, I, I would be hard pressed to vote for any budget that didn't include the full amount at this point in time, because. There's still uncertainty as far as that budget goes, they've used up most of, not all of, but most of their surplus. They're not using any in their budget at this point in time, and I'll get to that in a minute, because as a recovering accountant, um. In my mind, you don't come out of the, you don't take it out of the piggy bank to, to balance a budget, you just don't. I'm even a little uncomfortable increasing the expected, um, collect, collection rate, but I'm more comfortable with that. Ultimately, it will hit your, your surplus if. Collect collection rate, but I'm more comfortable with that, ultimately, it will hit your your surplus if indeed you don't meet those numbers. So it's a roundabout way of using your surplus potentially, so. I I'm not, I'm, as far as I'm concerned, the nine ninety one, seven fifty stays in the budget, so.
So one of the things I'm concerned about is in the not too distant future. The people of the town are gonna be asked potentially to look at some big numbers for projects for the schools. And I wanna make sure that we are best positioning ourselves for that time. Because at that point, it's gonna take whatever wiggle room we have and it's gonna really collapse it. And there may be other immediate needs in the town that just can't be ignored at that time. That's why I I think as far as I'm concerned, I really wanna. Get this to a point where I feel comfortable that we can start looking at how to absorb those. And it's not just the building costs, it's the operational costs that concern. That's that's kind of the the larger of the unknowns at this point. So that's what I'm looking at in terms of what we do now and how it can help us. One, two, three years down the road, and then beyond that for operational costs.
The one thing I wanna point out, and I I've pushed back a few times with the school department with state aid. I know, you know, me and the chairman last year were going back and forth here and outside here in discussing it and. It would never be easy conversations and always respectful. But the one thing I do wanna point out, you know. Since Karen's been superintendent and her whole staff and departments and everybody, they. They've worked very hard to try not to ask us for anything or keep the money going. They've been self maintaining their buildings out of their surpluses and whatever else, and they never, they never had to come to us too often. But the one thing I wanna point out is I look around us, Coventry, Warwick, Branson, Providence. Providence had the state committee take over their schools. Coventry kept an eye, Coventry town councils have kept an eyeing the school department money when they're sitting there telling them, we're eight million dollars in debt. We need to do something, and of course, the councils put their feet in the ground and said, no, not give me anything. Well, now look at where they are.
That's a big concern.
Warwick, same thing, always, I think, what, twelve to fourteen million? Without even the schools being built. And they're building two brand new schools. In the news media this week with the same same type of headaches and, you know, I get it as a council, we do our best to. Not spend the money and we, at the end of the year, when our audit comes back and we're saying we have a surplus. Thank you, like, that's a, that's a good job to all the employees, to the department heads that are running the town. Because we're not here on a daily basis running it day to day, we're here twice a month and plus whatever we do, whatever we're working on, right? So I give the day to day to the town manager and the department heads and 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 hopefully. Everybody's into it to save a dollar, but I can't see that if we cut the schools now, any money. That next year, that nine ninety one will probably be two.
Right, and that's what I'm talking about when I say we wanna be in the best position now. To be able to absorb some of those rather large expenses coming down in the future. And I don't wanna be like the other municipalities who are constantly struggling and making major cuts. And really, really suffering, because right now, we're not there, we're not at that point, we don't wanna be at that point ever. But we also wanna have the good things in life that are gonna do better for the taxpayers and the students of the district and all of that. And we wanna do what's what's right by our people, we just need to make sure that. It's it's like anything else, you know, if you're if. Forgive the simple example, but if you're driving a car that's breaking down on you every other month. And you know, next year I'm gonna need a new car, well, you you probably better start cutting back now to get ready for that big expense. And that's an oversimplified example, but it 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 does ring true that we need to be in a good position now. To be able to to continue a great partnership with our school department and the ones they serve.
And and that's, and I think that's why I said, you know, I have a tough time with cutting. Unvaking, uh, non vacant positions, somebody's in it, right, and because there's there's a bump in process and. When when it comes to a bump in process, sometimes, and we've seen it. Not always the qualified person's doing their job, right, because in a bump in process, it's it's nothing we can do about that. But when there's vacant jobs, vacant positions, oh, you know, if we can do the work without. The individual, without that and doing more with less, which was a big quote. And the one thing I I know I'm not allowed to say where I am at work. That's how we used to, that's how we do it all the time, that's how we do it, that's how we did it. Well, we have to figure it out, and and again, I'm, you know, this is this year, and I'm sure we're gonna, soon as the budget's over. We go into next year thinking, what are we gonna change? And I'm hoping that's the mentality here in the town hall and throughout the town, because. Again, it, every year it comes before us, and now it's on us so. It's not, you know, we sat up here numerous times as council people and said, well. Go down to where we think is good, let's let the voters vote on it. They vote on it, and you can say, voters, voters, well, you can't say anymore, it's the council vote.
Well, so unless, unless there's still the option, it's the super majority, which I think everybody here knows that, we have to best at least give four. Or we have to have to agree on it, if we don't, then we call it two budgets and that would drive the voters, I don't think everyone wants it to happen, but.
Yeah, I I mean, I I do wanna go back and and I I am confident, because I know the work that has gone into this, this process. Mark, when did you start the budget process?
Kristen and I started generally. The end of October, November, the and back and forth feedback with the department heads, they need. To have their proposals to me before they walk out on Christmas Eve. And then usually during those holiday weeks is when I start going through and and making notes, and then we sit down individually. You know, to Mr. Reed's point, do we, do I go in there and say, come in with X percent? Down with various versions? No, and I don't wanna say I don't ask them, because I don't want them to waste their time, but they're all very. They're all been very fiscally responsible and they mostly have all been here for a long time, so they understand the constraints that we have. And like the council president mentioned, a significant portion of that is stuff that's done through collective bargaining and is fixed and. I've always commented that, you know, we can't save the amount of money we need to sometimes in paper clips and reams of paper. It's it's just not possible, so the the significant savings needs to come through. Labor and the associated accounts when we need to make those type of cuts, so. Then it comes on me and and Kristen and the department heads to listen to you all and tell me which. Services are, you know, essentially we have to figure out which ones are. On the the least important and then try to figure out a way to be, to have the le, the least amount of impact, because I think. The services that we provide are what the people and the taxpayers and residents and visitors and and everybody expects. So to make significant cuts is gonna directly impact some of those services, and I understand sometimes that is necessary and required. But to go back to something else that was said is, I think Chris and I, and we know this is a comprehensive project, it's not a one year. Done and cross it off, as soon as this project's done, we're on to the next one, and we're also factoring in that. Every three years, we're going through collective bargaining, so we're constantly taking notes and department heads are doing it on. Where they see things that could be done more efficiently. You know, do more with less. Type of scenarios and, you know, we had a lot of years when the employees. For lack of a better word, were not really being taken care of, they were doing, they were essentially doing more for less. And and that's not a beneficial scenario when we look to attract and maintain. A quality workforce to provide those services safely and efficiently that everybody expects. So it's it's definitely a balancing act, it's definitely a comprehensive effort that, you know, it's not a one year and done, it's. You know, multiple years and, you know, a lot of strategy, if you will. So the end result is is something that's acceptable.
Did we have? Potential what the tax rate is gonna look like yet?
I I have approximate, but of course, you know, it's it's. Subject to change.
I almost hate to put them out if they're not final.
I've heard a different dollar amount, so.
Yeah, I mean, you hate to confuse people, I mean, is it, there will be a substantial decrease in the tax rate.
Oh, absolutely.
So I, we should make that clear.
Single family, for example.
Family right now at eighteen sixty nine.
So we'll see several dol, several dollars at least, okay. I mean, that's, because I've got, I've done calls from a lot of people, with people that have their accounts like in escrow, and then they kinda already go up and then I'm like, well. That's them assuming, but we don't obviously. Like, we don't have a tax rate, so they can't have a tax rate. So you'll have that number by when we do the, when we do the vote in May?
Yeah, and and keep in mind, that's the, that's a single family residential. So you you hate to put one number out there, because then a commercial person.
It will go down several dollars for all.
Yes, 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 it should.
So I I, yeah, one second. I I know personally, when I saw my appraisal come in, I took the tax rate and I took what I think the new tax rate should be. And I fit okay without the tax increase.
People don't realize, so when you, I've asked almost everybody, like, everybody's just gonna vote a significant amount, which means the tax rate's gonna come down that much more.
A lot of people start understanding that more, we've been, I know a lot of people have been explaining that, don't, you know. Because soon as, soon as the tax, uh, the assessive bills came out, not the bills, the appraisals came out. If anybody follows social media, everybody says, how am I gonna pay these taxes, how am I gonna pay this? Because they, they didn't read that one little sentence, do not use your current tax rate. People start using their current tax rate, thinking they're going up a thousand, two thousand, three thousand. I I actually had had a person call me, there's one up forty thousand, I said, you're gonna be happy. They don't believe me, I said, okay, I bet a dinner on it, and I know I don't bet dinners too often. No, it's gonna be a real dinner, because I know once the tax rate comes out, they're gonna probably see a four or five hundred dollar decrease. And they don't believe you, but I know it's gonna happen, so.
No, I I just wanted to to, again, reinforce the idea that this process is a months long process. I would suggest, and I did not hold them, that I bet there's not one department head in the room that got everything they asked for. I'm sure of that, as a matter of fact, so it it is something that. I think they have spent a lot of time on and and been responsible. So. I I just, I guess kudos to all of you and to the town manager and Kristen, because I know they have worked really hard on this, so. I'm sorry, Alan.
Alan Plaza, five Robin Lane, and just a couple of comments with regard to methodology. I know you had two workshops for the council, you've had two for the public. And I just wanna ask the question or make a recommendation, there are a lot of people in this town. Either taxpayers, town employees, or businesses. Who may, I'm I'm a believer in zero based budgeting, but may have an input, they see the day to day operations in this town. The problems, the good points, and they may have some input to you, to the budget. I would recommend that next year, you modify that and accept public comment from them, you're gonna get some crazy ideas. You may get some fantastic ideas, but at least accept the public's input when you're going through this budget. As I said, there's a lot of ideas out there, and it wouldn't, you know, ignoring them is not the way to go. One other question, if someone could clarify, for late payments, what is the current percentage? Twelve percent, that's what I thought, because I thought I heard eighteen. It was, and we we fought it, and I brought that to the attention of the council, but I just wanted to make sure on that. And it is what it is.
Alan, just making my notes, you're suggesting accepting public input at the workshops.
At the workshops. At times we did, and and I'll be honest, at times we did let the public speak at the workshops, because. To me, I've always said if they took time out of their night to be here. That, but then we did put a stop to it because. Uh, we couldn't get through it sometimes, so that was the toughest part, you know.
That's the nature of the business.
I understand, but we were here some nights till eleven o'clock at night, I mean, and but there was only three people in the crowd, just standing here bringing up the same thing all over.
Well, that that's where you can limit it, you can ask them for inputs, especially the businesses. And not just the department heads, but also the people who are out there day after day. I mean, in the Navy, we have captains suggesting boxes and sailors come up with some great ideas. I'm sure the West Ward Police Fire, the Ministry of Employees would do the same thing. And with regard to perhaps giving some idea, maybe in the neighborhood of. As Mr. Messier suggested, I think waiting until the actual vote. Is just gonna increase the anxiety among the elderly, the other people, so maybe you can do that, I can't see. The reason to hide it, you can put it in the neighborhood of, something close. And get it out there to the public. You know, if there's nothing to hide, do it.
You're right, there's, there is nothing to hide, Alan, I agree with you, I mean. I don't think you have an exact number, I I mean.
It's it's in, it's it's dropping at least four dollars and twenty some odd cents.
So it's in the fourteen.
It's gonna be under fifteen, it'll be under, it'll be under fifteen, under fifteen.
And that's roughly where I I think, I heard four different numbers, not even from Kristen, so that's.
So so under fifteen for a single. Residential for a single family, it'll be different rates for. Commercial and and. Multi families and resident.
But no, it does help to know that it's gonna be dropping at least four dollars.
Under, under fifteen, yes.
If you did the quick math, it's around four, her number's fourteen fiftyish, fiftyish. You know, don't hold us to a penny, please. Till we have it solidified, because there are, there are appeals going on, whether it goes up, down, left, right.
And and it could be.
I'm gonna want to repeal last time that went off.
The other thing, I I would just like to get out there if I could, because, and I think, John, you said sins of the past. I I'm gonna twist that a little bit, I don't think it's sins of the past, I think it's. We had problems back then where we couldn't give salary increases and we gave benefit increases. We knew that was gonna happen, or whoever was sitting here knew that was gonna have an impact down the line, and we're we're now feeling that impact and. Kristen talked about the the legacy pension being a big, big part of that, well, we've sort of taken care of that too by. Getting out of that business and letting the state do it, and those benefits are far less, so. It's not since, it's what we needed to do to survive back then.
And and you look. You know, Alan, we talk about expenses, you're you're on the board in the state of Rhode Island, right?
You would believe it.
And and you fought for ARC, you fought for the ARC to get back, right?
I fought for the ARC. Just to let you know, I looked at West Ward, eleven point seven million this year. The ARC, eleven, twelve point one four six next year, and to keep you advised. My group is meeting routinely with the General Treasurer to take RISA two thousand eleven. Throw it out and coming up with a good plan for the taxpayers and for the people in the system. I mean.
When you, when you, when you fought for that call to come back, that also puts, that comes back to us as an expense, added expense. And don't get me wrong, I'm not, I'm not arguing whether it's right or wrong.
Pointing out to, so people, you know, I I can elaborate, there were people on that, in this pension system. That have only their pensions, no social security. And they did not have an increase since two thousand twelve, and David, I challenge you to live on your salary from two thousand twelve, that's part one. It will be changed, for example, the governor has proposed scooping the surplus. From twenty twenty four, it was forty two point something, he wants to scoop twenty one point six. The person from the State Budget Office said, hey, it's only fifty percent, they changed the law. And I raised my hand and prior to that. And I raised my hand, and prior to that, it was a hundred percent. And tomorrow, the retirement board is voting on a resolution to send to the governor, and every member of the General Assembly telling him, you can't do that, it's only the third time in thirty years that that's had been done. And if you think I was bad here, you should see me on the retirement board.
We never said that, Alan, we never said that.
Going forward, I wanna thank Sauer, because, uh, the re- the retirement board passed a resolution. Going forward, from, actually from the February meeting, not only are they recording the meetings, they're archiving that, but that was done on a, uh, policy change. Policies can be changed, I've introduced or via Rep. Surfer to have that enshrined in general law, so they can't do it so easily. We are making progress up there, so everybody can watch what goes on, and, uh, I'm having fun there.
And, and again, Alan, I know.
I'm sure they are, too.
I, I know one area that I think you and I have agreed on in the past, and I, I've been guilty of it, my first four years in the council, I know they put, it was two million dollars into the pension fund.
Crazy.
I think you stood up here and said, no, I, I'll, I'll even give it to Kelsey, Peter Kelsey said, give more. Well, we had a, we had an unfortunate station fire settlement, where do we take the five hundred thousand to cover that yearly settlement? Out of the pension contribution, we cut it down to one point five, that was in two thousand nine, ten, so.
That's one of the benefits of being in the state plan, now we can't do that.
We can't do that, and, and, and one of the reasons why, and I, I give the hulu to Mary Beth, that she worked as hard as she did, because one of our former town managers said, there's no way we're gonna get that done in one year's time, I need three years to get it done. Well, Mary Beth, and we got it done in a year, and I, I love the fact that, I, I don't like the bill every year, don't get me wrong, but I love the fact that you take the politics out of the pension board, and I think the employees feel that much better, too. And also, the people on the pension board, you talk to any of them, when they did things, and they made cuts, do something, or they had a tough time, I, I've watched them get berated, so, and, and yelled at for certain things, and, you know, um, Jimmy Telly, you joke with me the other night about it, he stood in the back, used to yell at me all the time, he goes, you never threw me out, though, I said, because you were respectful about it, even though, I understand, we were, we were, and we're messing with livelihoods, you know, and then we got into a pension crisis, and yes, and I, and you look around, it's every city, it's not just West Ward. It's just a lot more coming out now, we just came out early, so ultimately, but going back to what Mr. Reed said earlier about, you know, police details and, you know, there, you look at police and fire, their revenues that they generate, they wanna generate that revenue, you know, the ambulance runs and the police details, and as much revenue they generate, put it into that account, the fire chief has had ne- never had to come up here and ask for an ambulance, this fire chief or another, the only thing they had to say is what account they'd taken out of, which was the, the rescue account, and it never went to the taxpayer, so we're consistently raising the money to pay for those ambulances, the police cars, you know, so we're not sitting here every budget saying, we need five cars, put it in the budget, you know, when you hear the chiefs come up here and say, this is the line item, this is the line I wanna take it out of, which is their revenue budget, that's, that's a great thing, you know, they're, they're self, they're trying to be self-reliant, you know, because if we took all that revenue and then spent it elsewhere, like, say, a zero percent tax increase, and all of a sudden, police chief comes up, says, I need five cars, because five are broken down, they're done. Or the, the fire chief comes up, says, I need an ambulance, what's an ambulance, supposed to a million dollars right now? Seven fifty, somewhere in there, maybe a little higher?
Four, four thirty.
Four thirty, okay, that's fully dressed?
No.
No, exactly.
That's just the truck.
That's just the truck, so fully dressed, it's probably about seven.
So.
Six.
Yeah.
So.
It's a lot.
They, but we, and believe it or not, the amount of miles we put on an ambulance in this town is amazing, and one thing in this budget that really hasn't shined is the third ambulance. That's for the public safety of this community, you know, we, the amount of runs, the chief gives us the amount of runs every year, and we do, and the amount of strain and stress on employees, just constantly just running back and forth to Kent County Hospital, Rhode Island Hospital, mutual aid, so on and so forth, hopefully, that third one's gonna bring in enough revenue to help pay for itself, too, so hopefully, you know, that's, the self-revenue thing has worked, and that's been through many councils throughout the years.
So, so Mark, or, or everyone, I guess, um, working off what Alan said, maybe that's something that just could be on the website, or, or there is some sort of Dropbox throughout the year, instead of waiting for a crunch time at the end, because then that could be very chaotic and almost unmanageable, to be honest with you. See if people have ideas, and, and you might get some crazy things, I, I'm aware of that, but i- if there's some way to do that, perhaps, and I, I also don't want anybody, uh, the, the pension number will continue to grow for the next twenty years, I mean, that, that's the reality of it, that legacy pension number will continue to grow, so.
Eventually, it will come back down.
It will.
But.
I think I'll be dead, but yes, yeah, yes.
You're still young.
Yeah, you are, but I'm not.
And, and again, Alan, with the Ni-Hot report, I always compare it to Ni-Hot, but we're, we're even saving money right now, because Ni-Hot is looking about fourteen million right now, according to their twenty-five year plan, so when we, you sit there and say fourteen million versus eleven, yes, it's a sucky bill that we get every year, but it's still three million dollars cheaper than what Ni-Hot said or suggested that we put in. But, like I said, the only thing about Ni-Hot versus the state is, state sends us the bill, and we're responsible for paying it.
Well, hopefully, things will change, Frank Karpinski will be leaving at the end of June, the new director hasn't come in yet, but my group has been meeting with, uh, General Treasurer Deosa, and I don't know what your feelings are on him. He was mayor of Central Falls, and what bothers him more than anything else was what they had to do with already established pensions for their people. And I talked to him, I said, you gotta do the right thing, he said, I wanna be able to sleep at night, he wants to do the right thing. Uh, my opinion of him has changed, I think he's a good guy, his staff is brilliant, they're working with us, so I'm not promising anything, but we're trying, we really are trying, and, uh.
No, you and I had that, you and I had that conversation a couple, about a month ago, you know, because I, your opinion at the microphone was totally different than when you were talking about that night, Ken, you know, it's amazing what you learn when you start working with somebody. It's, you know, it's very easy to sit here and say, do this, do that, but when you get to know the job and what they're doing, sometimes it changes your opinion.
And you're fortunate that I'm putting my energy into that, and I'm not here harassing you guys.
You still got us once in a while, you still get us once in a while, that's okay. Haven't thrown you out, though, Alan, haven't, because you've always been respected, you might have been heated, but respect.
So, so, can we, can we go back to Jason's, um, list, just because I think we should address them?
Right.
He's not here, so we did the twelve to fifteen, has there been any sent, is there any sentiment about changing that, and really what, what difference that might make?
It, it's really hard to quantify, because there's so many different scenarios on how interest is charged.
Okay.
So, at the end of the year, we have what we collected in interest, right? Should we put out like a percentage onto that, so? Like, I know you quantified it as far as, like, if, if, so if we went, let's just say, the last five years average minus a hundred thousand, let's minus a hundred. Take the last five years of late fees and change it from twelve percent to fifteen percent, so you add three percent to that, really, right?
What am I adding it to, because there's so many, if you pay late in April, you're, you, the interest is going back to July.
No, no, I get that, so, so at the end of the year, you know how much you've collected in late interest, correct?
Yeah.
So at the end of the, so, and I get it, it was variable, so if I pay late in May, in April, or July, or whatever, December, I get that. But at the end of the year, for the last three years, we have a dollar amount what we've collected in late.
We have that right now.
And if all three are roughly the same, let's add three percent to that, say, we're gonna move it up to fifteen, that should give us a benchmark, now, where, if, if we can.
Yes.
And then secondly, if that lights a fire on the people that pay their taxes on time, it should wash in this end, because our collection rate should go even higher, correct? So if you, if they pay it in late fee or no late fee, it should draw, it should, on both sides, it should be.
It might be a big jump, but.
You might see a point two percent, it has a, it could have a reverse effect, exactly, but we have to be creative.
Well, I just think with that, I think we can still consider that and make a change, but do it outside of this, of this budget process, it's gonna require, at the very least, in my opinion, an ordinance to do it, to make the change.
Okay.
So I, I think, you know, if it helps us along the way, and the logic makes sense, then we, then we can move that forward, but as far, as far as part of this, I don't think we can adequately put a number in that's gonna feel good or make sense, uh, plus or minus.
But I think, you know, based off of what Jay in his note shared, and I'm probably speaking for him a little bit here, and for me, is at the end of the year, rate surpluses are great, I don't disagree, I'm glad we're in the black and not the red, any business wants to be, any company, everybody wants to be in the black. But in the town aspect, when we're so far in the black, million, two million, I, I, at that point, I ask, do we overtax the resident?
I, I think it's, it's, it's the revenues that really have been driving our surpluses, and, you know, it's hard, the economy, I like to be conservative, because revenues can, you know, provide a great surplus, they can also send you right into a deficit, you can be right on target with your expenses, and if your revenues are too, you know, crazy, then you end up still in a deficit, so I'm very conservative, you know, this economy of the building and the selling and has gone on, you know, longer, there's ebbs and flows, and it's gone on longer than I thought, so that's why I'm willing to kind of be a little less conservative with some of the, you know, the building, the town clerk, the, the finance revenues, but that really has been the driving force to our revenues, um, to our surpluses, it's been the revenues, and our collection rate.
And, and our, our surplus, it's, you're right, if you can get to break even rate, when, when, it's not that long ago, we had thirty-seven thousand dollars in surplus or something like that.
It was zero when I got here, it was absolutely, we said it had capital, when was that? Um, I came here November of twenty seventeen.
So, so it was zero then?
It was zero.
And I think our surplus at the end, after, after the audit, is seven point three million, is that somewhere in that, that neighborhood?
Correct.
And that's wonderful, it's not what we should have, I know by charter, it's okay.
Yeah.
However, if you look at the report that, that, um, uh, Mike DiPiasi does, and, and where we fall in, in relation to other cities and towns, we do not have enough in surplus. Um, when we talk about the school looking at a five million dollar deficit this year until they cut three, and, and still needing some, so seven point three million dollars does not last very long.
One disaster waiting.
That's a, that's one bridge, uh, on Green Bush, it's, I mean, it's just, so I don't wanna, um, I think it's wonderful that we've made the progress we have in, in the eight years, but, um, that's less than a million a year, and again, you can wipe it out very quickly, so I, I think, you, you just need to be careful, which is why I am never in favor of taking anything and putting a line on, in a budget that says use of fund balance, I, I'm just, that's not, but that's the recovering accountant, once again, so.
Yeah, with the numbers, with the one hundred and fifty added to revenue, and then if you printed the ninety-seven point seven percent, you said that would bring us to one point five percent, correct?
One point seven five.
What is that? One point seven five, that's what I have written down, is one point seven five percent, sorry, one point seven five. So, I mean, you were trying to get, your email, you were trying to get it down to below two, correct?
Yeah.
Well, I think my, my comments at the end were, I, I don't feel this budget would pass over two percent.
Well, and I, I don't think anybody wants to see that, but a- a- again, I just wanna, because Jason's not here, can we just go through those? I mean, um, the Saturday we'll pick up, Jane, who went to work day, I, I, does the contract fall for two?
That one, I believe, would re- would require negotiation, which I sent a letter to Council Ninety-four to engage that, we have an RFP out now for the solid waste recycling billing and part of collecting that information. Uh, I think it's worthy of a discussion on the best practice moving forward, again, that's not something we can count on.
There's a court judgment on that, too.
There, it's an arbitration ruling, and, because there were changes made without negotiation, um, apparently, um, so, you know, we wanna be responsible and respectful of, of that, so that's a process that I think that's gonna go beyond a setting of this.
This budget, right. Uh, using surplus, I, I, I mean, that's my opinion, and everyone else is entitled to theirs, but I, I would never, um, I, I don't think you wanna dip into surplus to, to balance a budget, um, to be honest with you. Uh, and the last thing was the school department, and I've already voiced my opinion there, that I think we would be cutting our nose to spite our face to, to actually cut that number. I, I believe they need it, and, uh, I think you said, they are the future, the, the students are the future of, of the town, so. Uh, but I don't know if others wanna comment on that, I just felt it was important to address Chase. Chase's points. Are there any vacant positions currently, there's just one, right?
There's just one that I froze in this, during, for this process.
Sorry, sorry, I'm.
Correct. And that's the only vacant position currently?
Right, like I mentioned today, there's one in Waste Water, which is obviously a different budget.
Yeah.
Uh, that is out for bid internally now, will likely, likely be filled within the next couple of days.
Any other comment from the council? Any more public comment on the budget?
So I don't think, I don't think you voted on a collection rate.
I'm gonna make a motion that we change the collection rate to ninety-seven point seven.
Okay.
Which would give a tax rate of one seven five and a levy rate of three point oh eight, sorry, Kristen.
I'm already going on the one fifty, right?
Yeah. So I have a second.
What was this question, Chase's question?
No, we usually go on the one fifty.
Yes, we did.
So, one more. So I have a motion for ninety-seven, seventy, collection rate, second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it?
And then from, from Kristen and my perspective, once you're done with your deliberations or thoughts and processes, um, if tonight concludes the hearings, we ask for a vote for the provisional budget, based on the information we have now, so Kristen can move forward with supplying, um, the required information to the Division of Municipal Finance and the proper advertising, so we be prepared to formally vote on the budget at the May eight tentative, well, not tentative, May eighth meeting.
And we had, we've had many discussions, and I, I apologize, can you explain to me again why we, we can't vote on the budget next, um, Town Council meeting?
May, well.
We wouldn't, because I have to now do my ad for the Department of Municipal Finance, it has to be advertised ten days before that final public hearing, which, um, would be the vote on the final budget, so tomorrow, if I get the blessing to move forward, I would be, get everything ready um, for Department of Municipal Finance, get it to them, hoping, um, I can get, uh, an approval by Friday, if not, um, I'll have my laptop in me next week, but I will get that over to, uh, the paper, and then, I mean, it would never make it to the twenty-second, it would not be, it would not be advertised ten days prior to May eighth, I mean, to April twenty-second.
Twenty-second, okay, okay, alright.
I just wanted to.
Yeah, because we still have to do that process, it's cumbersome.
So what you're looking for is a preliminary vote?
It's called, yeah, I think we were gonna call a provisional, provisional vote to.
Does that mean nothing to the, uh, change, no, but it's not, something could be changed up until that night, correct?
I mean, I mean, it probably wouldn't do changes, but it's, it, it's up for vote, is what you're saying at that point in time, right, the final vote on the, right, yeah.
Wait, wait, would you, that, that vote now?
No, a vote.
Okay, I'm waiting.
It's just a provisional vote, just to say that you guys are comfortable enough with us to move forward with the DMF, the Department of Municipal Finance.
Based on the numbers that we talked about.
Correct, right.
Based on what I said.
No, that's what I mean, not, what I'm saying, we're, we're giving you, like, right now, we're giving you the go ahead to do that, okay, we're doing a vote for that, or?
I mean, I, I think.
Can, can we vote? It's not on the.
Yeah, probably not.
The agenda, like a provisional vote is a vote, let's face it, so it's.
Well, you guys took votes. I'm not, they're not, that is true, I'm, I'm gonna change this, on the budget changes. That is true, I'm, I'm gonna change this on the budget changes. What, what have we done in the past, so this is different? So on the second public hearing, you did take a vote, um, that you were, that. The budget was.
So, so in essence, we'd be acting as the public going up to the civic center.
For the financial town meeting, I see, okay.
How does, so the super majority only applies to that vote?
Well, no, now it's three to one, cause there's four of us here, correct?
Well, that's what I mean. Which is the same, by the way, with, with four of us here.
No, no, it's the same, but would be four or five when we have the full.
Well, May, I, I would expect all five of us to be here.
Well, that's why we chose that date, right? I guess I would make a motion that, um. Ask Kristen to do the legwork she needs to do to get this budget in order for us to vote on it on the eighth of May.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
I just don't, our work isn't done.
What more work?
I think there's still some I have to be made.
Can, can we suggest them?
We don't have to be suggested tonight, or we're gonna have to go to a third public hearing. She needs to have the numbers to, to do that process. So if you have suggestions.
I have suggestions that I am. Not, um. Again, I am not a department head, I'm not town manager. There have been almost no cuts suggested to staff. And not filling an open position is not a cut.
Let's look this way, um, as the town manager, do you have recommendations to make those cuts? Or are you presenting as you'd see?
Based on what has been supplied by the department heads and our numerous meetings and discussions over the last few months. In order to provide the services that have been expected, I feel our staffing level is appropriate. At this time, so other than freezing the one vacant position. I don't feel that it would be responsible to cut any positions at this time.
So you feel we've reached full maximum efficiency?
I don't think we'll ever reach full maximum efficiency, we're all willing to work towards that. With an understanding that some of those require collective bargaining. Um, and, you know, like I said before, there's gonna be some sacrifices needed, so.
So I think one of the questions I asked this morning. Mark did give answer back. And, and to all of us, we did get it. In a, in a vacant position, I, I get what you're saying, it's not a cut, but it is a cut, if you don't fill it, then you don't have to pay for it.
So, but we're looking at numbers like that, that already don't include that position.
Right. Correct, so. Now. And I'll be frank. Somebody from DPW or somebody from the town hall decides they go on the sewer department. And I don't, and I, I don't know who applied for that position, I don't know, you know, that'd be an HR question, but. Do we, do we, cause the, the one thing I think I said in the beginning of this budget was, if we have any vacant positions. Internally. If we wanna move people around and fill those positions to be. Filled per se, so like right now in the sewer department, if somebody comes out of a department and we can, and the manager can see fit. Of not backfilling that position right now, we do have to go back to the union talking about, so, so that's, that's one thing that. Um, was brought up in one of the answers, um.
So within the contract, we can't eliminate positions if they're filled? How does, how does that work, I mean, every other company in the world, every other municipality in the world can, it's part of a union contract. If positions are no longer viable.
I think we can make changes to, to fiscal reasons. How, and, and with certain jobs and bargaining units, it's easier than others. In public safety, for example, you know, those, there's minimum manning requirements and. The changes would involve negotiations and the, the vacancies end up at the bottom, which is where. You need people, so they, they'd have to be organizational proposals, changes, negotiations.
My resistance to doing this by attrition is that we're not maximizing. The benefit to the taxpayer in terms of lowering their taxes, all we're doing is inflating, I don't wanna say inflating or padding, but we're increasing. A potential surplus at that point, so we've already billed taxpayers, for instance. And now somebody's leaving one position to go fill another, so maybe we can eliminate that position, we've already billed the taxpayers. We're not, we're not gaining anything on that.
So on one respect, I say yes, that, that makes sense. However, I haven't heard. A suggestion on which services you'd like to adversely affect. And suggest that I look to eliminate. A position or positions.
Suggest you look towards DPW. And it's not eliminating, eliminating services, it's about making efficient use of the resources we have.
And I think that would be.
That's a management issue, in my opinion.
Debatable and requires some research because, you know, there are, generally there aren't people. Um, sitting waiting for something to do, there are assignments, there's requirements for snow plowing, all hands on deck.
Storms and whatnot, that, that's not predictable, we have to account for that. But I would, I would respectfully push back on that last statement that there are people. With their time full. We've talked about it, we've talked about it here, we've talked about it outside of here, we've talked about it.
In, in Marco, I'll. I brought up a position at the very beginning of this budget hearing.
And the pushback is why I was hesitant.
And, and I'm gonna be honest. Yes, every business has that ten percent of the employee who works harder not to work than to work. Unfortunately, you can cut those positions right now, you can cut five positions on a DPW, look at the bottom of the list. Those are up and shining stars that actually came from other companies to come work here.
I understand that.
That probably that ten percent that is working hard not to work.
I understand that.
Okay, and I'm not, I'm not saying, and, and that's in every company and every business, I don't care if it's, huh?
But then at that point, it does become management.
It's, it's probably something that needs to be addressed now, um, you know, I think we, I, I think. Somebody came up here, wait a minute, somebody came up here last meeting and talked about drivers not getting out of the truck and. Well, whatever, people not getting out of the truck, well, we negotiated that, that they are no longer drivers, they're laborers slash whatever. Crew person, okay, if, and yes, we have so many employees and we have a assistant and a director. Assistant director and a director of DPW, I put that on them to manage. And, and keep an eye on, can they be everywhere at, at the time, no, cause they're up here with HR, they're over there with this one, they're over here with that one, they can't keep an eye on every employee. I, eh, nobody can, but unfortunately, I think.
So you think the staffing is right where it needs to be?
So here's what I think, and I'm gonna be blunt. I think if people learn how to coach discipline, you get rid of the right people. It's a wrong way to say it, but. And unfortunately, and I'm, I'm very guilty of that, and I'll be, I'll be the first one to say this. I'm guilty of this when we talk about cutting positions, I ask a particular employee who I know has the list in their desk. I can give you the name, so we're gonna get cut if you cut three positions on me, and I would say it'd be crazy.
Whatever he said is one hundred percent true, but unfortunately, we are now past that point, now we are forced with a difficult decision that's gonna unjustly affect. Certain members. But that's where we're, where we are, that's, that's just the truth of it. So you asked for suggestions or where?
But I just wanna point out that. If there's. If there's an issue with employees not working or not doing the right thing. I, I think that needs to be addressed. And, and again, I don't know what situations are going on, you know, I've heard different things, I always hear things, you hear things, everybody hears things, right? That's on manage. That's on Mark, that's on the department heads. Okay, I think I put in here, I hear we're doing more with less already in my email. You know, but again, if, if you've got attendance issues, you've got whatever. We gotta address them, because unfortunately, there is a little expense here with those employees. I think she said it's about eighty thousand dollars up an employee, well, if you wanna get down to that one percent, you're gonna probably have to cut three employees somewhere along this line.
Well, again, I'm not about the number, I'm about maximizing what we can do for the taxpayer, i- if we. If we get to the point where I'm satisfied that we've done everything we can do and that number is a two point five, then that's what it is. I know it's not gonna be a two point five, but, you know, and, and. Jason's not here, I can't speak for him, but I can tell you, if you wanna have the vote, we'll have the, we can have the vote. But come the next vote. I can tell you it's gonna be tough, if it stays the way it is now. So we can either, we can either get to that point and then look for a second version of this budget, or we can just do it now and get it over with quicker. And then eventually if it goes to the people, the, the taxpayers, the voters, they choose between the two. Kinda where I'm at. And again, I wanna, I wanted to say this, I, I, I believe the school department. Has gone above and beyond not only this year with their cuts, but what they've done over the last half dozen years to keep. Themselves self-sufficient and standing on their own without coming to the town for too much, that's appreciated, that's, that's noted. Um, I'm not, I, I think, based on what I saw up there. They've gone through and done enough on their end, I just don't know that on the town side, even though it's a very small margin, I still think there's a little bit that we can do, that's where I'm at.
Any discussion? I mean, I, I, I don't know if it's a, a discussion, I, I feel like if. If we don't have a solid feeling that. There's gonna be a super majority agreement on May eighth, and we shouldn't leave until we do.
I'm kinda saying that we won't have a super majority.
I can only speak for myself, I can only assume what's gonna happen in my life.
So from my perspective, I'd say, you know, a year's past, we've gone through this, you pick a line and say, I want. I want this reduced by.
But I don't think that's necessarily the role of the council.
Let me ask you something, uh, but let's say there's not a super majority on the eighth, like what's the process? I mean, hopefully there is, there's, there's not, what's the process at first, first, we'd have to move through the whole process again?
My, my interpretation is that I, I read the group and come back with a revised.
Right, but is there, is there a whole separate thing, we have to do two more hearings with the two, two, like, how does that work out?
That would essentially be another hearing. No, on whatever date would be decided after I, if I needed to produce a, a second budget. Whatever date would be, essentially, that would essentially be a hearing to discuss, get input. And potentially vote on.
Well, once. Which then would, from there, we would have to work on the ads submitted to DMF and advertise for ten days, another day for the super majority vote.
For the record, please understand where I'm coming from with this, again, we have a huge ask from the school department, potentially coming our way. We are not in the position to accept that right now, in my opinion, I, I mean, there's a lot more to be discussed and discovered and all that, but from, from. The people I talk to, and I'm trying to get some good feedback from my constituents. There's not a huge appetite for that, and the way we can make that more palatable is to make sure we are on sound financial ground. And make sure that everybody knows that we are running as clean and lean as possible when that time comes. It's not, that's not going to be an easy ask, and if we, if we do say, a one seven five now. And then next year it's another two and a half, what are we gonna do when that bond hits?
Well, again, the voters will decide if a bond happens or not, so that's up to the voters.
It's up to the hundred and forty people that show up and always say yes.
Oh, that's not always true.
Oh, I, I think, I think this is gonna be well advertised.
Dave, well advertised, this is.
Making sure that it's not a holiday week or whatever, that, we, we have discussed all this.
Yes, on this, on the budget, and so lots talking about, lots talking about the future, in the future, if the school building committee.
In best positioning ourselves to take that on.
Mark, I, I'll, I'll be honest, like, I know that, that school building committee is very dedicated. We're even getting to the frustrating point, I, I know I lost a little bit of my temper the other night with the company. And asking where do we stand, because, you know, we, we talk about the bills, we talk about where we are and. We question their numbers, you know, they're saying five million here, forty million there, we're like, what? And we're, we're fighting back and, and so even during that, you know. We, we have pushed back and said, do we need a sixty million dollar on, do we need an eighty, do we need a twenty, you know, we're pushing.
In two to three years, what do we do? If we just don't have the room to afford all of it, that's undermanning. What do we do, then we go to the general assembly and ask, like, like other municipalities are doing now, ask for an increase in the tax levy to. Six percent or eight percent, we don't wanna be in that position.
I don't think you get the support to, to bring it to the general assembly, are you here in this council right now?
Right, but if we're not left with a choice, we have to pay the bills. And if we don't have the ability to pay those bills under that, whatever those numbers are, a year or two to three down the road, then what do we have to do? Like it or not, we're gonna have to go to the general assembly and put ourselves in the position of a Providence or a Coventry or a Warwick. And I don't wanna do that, I want these school projects, I want these school projects because they're what's best for the town, but we can't do that. If we're not putting ourselves in the best position leading up to those. That's where this is coming from, it, that's, that's where I'm coming from.
And I hear what you're saying, I'm not, I'm not convinced, again, we don't run the town on a day-to-day basis, I believe. Some of the things you're talking about are indeed management issues. Negotiations were long and hard about changing from a driver, laborer to crew person.
And that was.
And, and, um.
Progress.
Yeah, and if it's not being adhered to, there is a, is or should be a progressive discipline process that happens. And if that results in people not being here anymore, that's the way to handle it. In my, again, my opinion, simply cutting, saying cut three people. Or four people or whatever from DPW, I'm not sure that that's productive, um, and. Yes, if, if a school bond project is approved. If there'll be, there'll be a couple of years at least of four percent tax increases, there's no doubt about that, there's no doubt about.
What happens when we can't pay all those, those bills under just a four percent tax increase?
I, I don't, I wouldn't vote for, as a person on the school building committee, I wouldn't vote to put it forward if we can't afford it. And that's, that's the conversation we're having at this point in time, if it has to be a reduced project, it has to be a reduced project. I mean, when we started the process a year ago, year and a half ago, year and a half ago now, um. We, we walked, we were, um. Not under the same conditions, we didn't have all the, uh, numbers as far as un, unfunded mandates that we have, the transportation issues, the. The out of, um, district costs, the DCYF costs, those were a no toss, so.
Those are only going to increase, by the way.
But, a- and it may be that, that we have to, we have to reduce. What we can, we can only afford what we can afford, and, and I would certainly never recommend that we, we suggest to the taxpayers that. What we can, we can only afford what we can afford, and and I would certainly never recommend that we, we suggest to the taxpayers that. That we borrow more money than we can afford to pay, and and does that sound familiar? Do I say that at every single school building committee? It's not what, what the tax increase will allow is what we can afford. I mean, so, um, I I'm just not convinced that cutting three, simply sitting here and saying, cut three. Uh, jobs at DPW is the answer, I just, I'm I'm not comfortable with that, but.
Well, again, I was asked for a direct.
Well, and and I think that's, I think we, that's what this process is.
Jeff, give us your thoughts, I know last year you came up here and you offered two positions right away that weren't filled and gave them up, that was two. That was about two hundred and forty, three positions, two hundred and forty-five thousand, so we did reduce DPW by three positions last year. So what what are your thoughts on this?
Well, probably not the best time to do that, it's been a little angry right now. Um, but. I think there's ways to save money. I'm not gonna stand up here and bash any of the guys, um, like you guys said. Myself and the assistant can't be everywhere at once, I don't have eyes in the back of my head. The union certainly has more rights than I do as management. Uh, that's the way the contract was done, there's nothing I can do about that. And you talk about progressive discipline, that's fine. But if I don't have the backing of everybody sitting up there.
Whoa, 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 Jeff, I'm gonna stop, stop you right there. We do not run this town on a daily basis.
Say you did, but they call you guys all the time.
Wait, I, wait, before you sit there and say that, you write somebody up. That's between you and HR, not Dave, cuz I'll tell you, I am a opponent of an HR person. It was one of the big proponents, me and Councilman Giroux wanted HR, because you know why, before that? Previous town managers, not this town manager, previous town managers, it was Monty Hall in his office, let's make a deal. And I did, people used to come to us and say, can you save my job, can you do this? And you know what, if we didn't save their job, they wanted to fight us to the local bar, you know, you just, you just talked.
We could just direct, direct the conversation back.
That you cannot sit there and say that we have to back you, we back you with a contract that you have to follow. That's what our backing wants.
Yep, so, so I wanna move back to just, the the question was, I think, what are your thoughts on staffing levels?
I I.
Just answer that.
Well, we had three positions last year, the year before were taken, that weren't filled and hadn't been filled in five years. We we discussed that, yes. Do I think the staffing level is okay? It's adequate right now, um, but I I do think there's ways to save money. But I think that's a conversation that needs to be had with the town manager, myself, the assistant. And uh, go from there, I I think that's a conversation that needs to be. Had for sure, I mean, there's, there's ways to do it, we've discussed it in the past and. It just. It hasn't come to fruition yet, I just think we need to have a, have a little discussion about.
And again, you have a contract that you run by. And we as a council supported that contract.
And I also believe that that's a conversation for another time because.
Well, it is clear, Jeff did not get everything he wanted in the contract, there there is, there's no doubt about that, but but that's the reality of, that's the reality of negotiations, Jeff.
I didn't mean to offend you when I said that, and and I apologize.
You did, because you said we'd have to back you, we don't, we don't deal with daily.
It was said the wrong way, and I do apologize for that, so I I I didn't mean that in a negative sense in any way, shape or form. Um, so I do apologize for that, but um, yeah, the contract, we have a contract that we have to follow, you're absolutely correct. Sometimes are we, are we lenient with it? Yep, not gonna say we're not, on both sides, you know, we we on both sides. I think if we're, if we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it correctly, then yes, everything needs to be held to the letter, but again, you have to understand the fact that. Myself and Kevin, we can't be everywhere at once, like you said, you said that earlier, we can't be, um. We get phone calls, we get messages, we get everything, you know, and if we don't see. Uh, the employee not doing what they're supposed to be doing personally, and we're taking a third party. I can't, I can't sit there and, in my opinion, I can't sit there and discipline. That employee for something a guy said down the street. Cuz I didn't see it, it's his word against his word, or, so how do you, how do you sit there and discipline an employee for something? That you didn't see them do. You know, unless it was caught on video, blatant, whatever the case may be.
Yeah, and that, in my opinion, that's something that, that's a management issue, that's something that's disciplinary, that's something we work with HR. Um, and conduct investigations and try to handle things appropriately, whether. They're unsubstantiated or substantiated with proper counseling, retraining, discipline, whatever, whatever's appropriate. Again, I think that we're shifting off of the, where where we need to be and talk about dollar signs.
Could you get your job done with three less people? Could you provide the services that you're expected to provide with three less people?
Well, it depends on what service, in in a winter time, no, and I'll tell you why. We're not getting the vendors that we used to get, because as David can attest to, uh, insurance is. Is almost impossible for a lot of our vendors, I I can't count how many people came to us this year, I can't do it cuz I can't get insurance. So, as of right now, we have sixteen plowers. So, essence, I need sixteen people to put in those plowers, lost vendors. Cuz some of our plowers are pretty good size, so we need those vendors. Last year, uh, we had three vendors that we could count on with one truck. And sometimes we get an extra two from a certain vendor. Can't count on that.
I I I wanna say this, in, you know, in a little bit of defense here also. The last three to four years especially, I'm gonna say DPW has gotten a lot done that I've never seen before. We 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 had, I know there was work orders sitting in a pile for over a year to get like a drain cleaned or whatever, it gets done. In a reasonable time, and that group does, I'll say Jeff in group get it done. Where I know previous directors. Didn't get them.
I'm gonna.
The sidewalks got done, I see a lot of sidewalks getting done, I see a lot of more construction getting done that never got done before. I see Pox and Rec not getting complaints of high weeds under the uh. The bleachers and uh, you know, guys making sure they're getting overtime to to weed rack the field instead of doing it on normal time. I I I see a lot more getting done than what got done years ago. I I will say it is running much better and it does have less people. Now, I personally say, okay, you can cut three positions, but at the end of the day, when you're saying, okay. Might not do sidewalks this year, we might not do this, and and the bumping process, another whole process. You know, and 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 that's neither here nor there, but, and I know I shouldn't look at the bumping process. But I do, because some of those young kids that just come here, employed, they save us money on the pension aspect of it. They are actually gonna probably be long-term employees here, so to see them walk out that door, we might lose some good employees. And, you know, you, you gotta look at it, and that's why I said. If you have a discipline problem or an employee problem, let's work on the problem first. And I, and I know it's not gonna be enough to get you through this budget, but you work through that problem, come next budget, says. I I'm, or throughout the year, saying we're not gonna fill this position, we're set for next budget. So, so I get it, both aspects.
Right, and and we, we could sit here all night and lay all our cards on the table, we don't need to do that. We don't, it it's still coming down to dollars.
Well, you you're right, but what I, you know, I'm gonna sit here and I'm gonna defend uh. The crew at DPW because, like David said, they uh, a lot has gotten done. And the quality of work, I don't think anybody can sit here and 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 deny the quality of work that the DPW guys are doing, or the Pox and Rec guys. Because the quality of work has been top-notch, um, we hear it from the residents, we hear it from everybody. Uh, even you guys, you guys tell us all the time, everything is great, so I I am gonna defend the fact that they, the guys, when they're doing their job. They bust their rear ends and they get the job done. And and it's hard sometimes, it's it's hard, uh, you know, you have different variables, different things going on, but the guys. The quality of work and the quantity of work has been uh, top-notch, obviously, if you cut positions. Then the amount of work is gonna go down, it's not, I I I'll never let quality sacrifice anything. Is the amount of work, yeah, you know, like David had mentioned, you know, you might not get, you know, twenty sidewalks done this year, you may only get five done this year. So, there is, there's always gonna be a a problem with cutting positions, there's always gonna be that, well, we're not gonna get as much done as, as we used to. Uh, and and the big concern would be the winter time, honestly, you you guys know that as well as I do, because there's uh. People are very passionate about having their roads plowed.
How, well, you say that, winter time, once most of our employees take their vacation time, or their sick time or whatever, it's probably during the warmer months.
Yeah, yes, absolutely, that is correct.
So, that's the tough part.
We we we, you know.
They're out, and you're gonna have people doing work, if you got three guys out, you're down three anyway. They're getting paid vacation and sick rent, but.
The the only, the only thing with that is we can, obviously, as management, we can, we reserve the right to tell you. Hey, we're only letting two guys off this week because of this situation, whatever the case may be, we do reserve that right. You know, all the variables come into effect and all that too, so.
You might approve, but I can call out sick tomorrow.
I wasn't gonna say that, but yes, you are correct.
There's that, I'm used to addressing that as well. You can't.
Depends what the attendance policy is.
Exactly, and where they stand, if they have time left or not, that's a different story, we're getting way deep into the weeds here. So, Jeff, before you leave.
Yes, sir.
I was asked to stick my neck out and I did, you're telling me right now you need all the employees you have. I'm not asking you if you can afford to cut one, two, three, ten, whatever, you need all your employees.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions for Jeff? Thank you for coming on, Jeff, sorry to, it was a little cool, would you?
That's I'm seeing Dave, that's not Dave losing this. In year two thousand twenty-five.
Again, these are tough times, I I get it, you know, this is, do you get third budget, second budget, second budget? You know, it's, it's difficult, like I said last time, you know, sitting, we all sat in the school audience. We saw everybody up on stage, their faces, the people that were there, their faces, you know. That's right, and I get it, but I walked around this town hall because I did have suggestions brought to me. And. I look and I'm like. There's only two offices that have more than one person in the office in here, and it's Sarah's office. In the finance office, that's it. You know, but then you have the collection side and the other side, the two different, the collection side and the finance side, so. When you look down there at the multiple employees, half is reporting to one person, half's reporting to the other, so. You have to look and say, okay, who's down there, the same thing, they're not here, they're out sick, they're on vacation. Does the office shut down? Because we're down to one, hence why we have a floater, you know, that was one of the reasons, and I and I brought that position up before. But now that I see that, the offices usually never closed and people can come in here eight to four, or eight to four thirty, eight thirty, four thirty, I'm sorry. And be able to conduct business and not have to walk in here and say, oh, the office is closed, I gotta come back later. Um, you know, I even talked to Mark about that, thought that we put on there that we're, town halls closed between twelve and one, and everybody goes on lunch at the same time. And then we reopen at two o'clock. You know, some, some people are doing that.
Right, and and again.
How do you do?
That, that wasn't anything that I was looking for.
No, no, I I'm just saying, like, and and then I looked. And and I made a mistake this first budget here, this first budget meeting, because. A councilperson came to me and talked to me about an individual, and I looked at that position and I'm like. You know what, if that, that individual or individuals have time to go spend doing things that not work-related, then we could probably cut that position. As I went deeper in, I sat down, or I had a conversation with Chief Leame, and I spoke to him about. The maintenance guy there, the maintenance guy here, and. He told me that the maintenance guy at the police department has to do so much, sometimes get called in on weekends, because if there's. Blood, urine, whatever in the jail cells, that he has to clean it, so I, I, after talking to him. I've changed my mind, I I I've, I've said, you know what, and and same thing with the floating position. As long as, and and this is all I ask, and I ask this from any employee works for me or here or anywhere. Give me an honest thirty-seven or forty hours a week and. That's all I'm asking, that's, that's it, you know, and I told you, there are some employees, no matter what business it is, there's always that ten percent. You know what, that's a management.
Right, but but as I mentioned, that. That ship is sailed, that uh, that is not part of our dilemma in front of us today. There's nothing we can do between now and May eighth that's gonna resolve that situation, so we have to resolve it. In the only way necessary, or or the only way we can, I should say.
But I I wanna, I wanna resolve that issue, kind of what I said earlier, is. We have a lot of good employees out there, a lot, and I don't want that ten percent to belong by those individuals. I think we deal with that ten percent on a management level and deal with it correctly. And let HR and the department heads deal with that, and that that could be any department here, by the way, it's not just, and I'll keep talking, it's giving any department.
Uh, you know, I don't wanna look like I'm just targeting particular positions or people. But just based on knowledge or things that have been told to me. By some very reliable in-house sources, that's, that's what I came up with.
Any other comment?
That's fair, I mean, I I'm just not a fan of cutting, for the sake of cutting, if if I have to take the man, we, we're not here day-to-day. I have to take the department head and the town manager's work that they're doing the best. I would always encourage them, we should always try to become more efficient, we always can be, no one's as efficient in it. I know I'm certainly not, that's for sure, so. Cutting to 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 say we cut because the schools did, or I I just, I'm not. That, that doesn't, um, that doesn't sit well with me, um, if, yeah, the director thinks he needs the people, um. But I would say that it's fair notice that it's being looked at and you need to make sure that we are working to be more efficient. And I I agree, uh, progressive discipline does need to happen, period.
That goes without saying.
Yeah, well, it doesn't necessarily always happen, so, yeah, so now it's been said officially.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, where does that leave us?
Any other comments?
Well, I don't know.
Any other cuts? Suggestions?
I think we're at the point where we're voting to have, that we're confident, that we're confident with the budget we have. For the May eighth vote that I sent, and we pay for an ad, and I do my due diligence with DMF.
I'm gonna make a motion to move forward the budget that we have before us.
Sorry, Jay, what?
I'm making a motion for the budget we have before us with the amendments we made tonight, which was the adding the one hundred and fifty thousand in revenues. And the collection rate of ninety-seven point seven percent, which would bring us down to one point seven five percent. That's correct, right?
Yes.
I think we're going in the right direction, could there be, could there be more work? I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Well, we should do it now. I mean, now's the time to do it.
There, there's only.
These two meetings are for that.
Yeah, well, there's only a couple of ways that you can do it. And unless the department head has positions available that they think they can do without. But again, if I'm correct, just correct me if I'm wrong, I know it's for budgetary reasons, but. There will be some sort of grievance or whatever.
I would, I would anticipate there'd be obviously a reaction, uh, whether it rises to a grievance level. I mean, obviously, we like to be inclusive when we can to get. Feedback, and that's a lot of what the collective bargaining sessions were about, uh, with an understanding that. We're not a bottomless pit where we understand we'd wanna be able to pay employees, um, you know, salary and benefit package. To be able to attract and maintain good people, um, but. Uh, but where else can, can we recognize some savings? Uh, and that's the give and take of negotiations. So, where else to do that at this point in time? I don't have, uh, I don't have the almighty suggestion on, on that. Again, if, if I'm told or directed saying this is where we need to be, um, I'll come back with recommendations. On how to get there and keep you informed on what services may be adversely affected. I think that's my role. Um, so you can make the best decision possible on the bottom line.
I also think it's tougher at this juncture. Like when you talk about cutting positions, I think if, if we're talking about cutting stuff here that's not gonna affect the day-to-day operations of the town. I think at the witching hour it's tougher, you know, we wanna cut, just like you said, just cut to go, we wanna just cut some money, I think it's more difficult now. It's just to know all the effects, we wanna cut three, like, let's say we're three positions in any department.
I, I know, I don't remember that number came from.
I threw it out, because that's two hundred and forty thousand.
Oh, but whatever.
Eighty thousand, because I'm going by, by the way, I'm going by the younger persons, because you went by the bottom of this salary before, right? Eighty thousand with healthcare, because they're not, they're not.
You're saying it's tougher at this point to just go to know what other effects that it would have at this point?
If I may, Kristin, what, what would something like that look like? I know, I'm not saying that's where we're wrong, but two hundred and forty thousand more out of the expense.
I thought that we get, trying to get to a normal. Is Shirley still here?
I think she had a family commitment at seven thirty.
Do we have, um, just curiosity, give us an answer tomorrow, she's not here, right, are they posted that position to go down to the sewer? Do you have an idea of how many people may have applied for it and where they may have come from?
It is an open bid, um, I believe it's expected to be filled within two days. I don't know what hand who bid for it, but I need at least one, it's kinda like the DPW.
But there could be somebody else from another department that admitted too, but we just don't, so is there a way you can?
Shirley.
Like, I, I don't want the names, just department where they may have been from. And then make a decision from there too.
You're saying, maybe, are you saying?
Are you basically saying, don't fill that position?
Oh, we don't know where it's coming from, so we can't, so again.
Well, it's, it's outside of wastewater, so.
Yeah, it's outside of wastewater, a different budget, so it's coming from our budget, more than likely.
No, I, I understand.
So, for instance, I'll just say somebody from Sarah's office puts in for it and gets it, and we come back to Sarah and say, do we need to fill that position? Or Kristin, somebody from your office put in for it, you know, then, then that's, that's what we do.
Again, to me, that's like, that's an ongoing.
That's not the budget process, that's part of the management process, process that we can direct, that we should be doing that. And that we're not going to fill that position, that's fine.
Yep, that position shouldn't be in the budget, right, that costed.
They were taxing on the, on the position.
So, in other words, yeah, that, if so, that's.
But then, but then.
If you had the foresight, and you knew you were gonna do it, or it was properly negotiated at a time of manner.
Right.
Then that's clear and obvious, if, if it's not, then it's, during the, during the year, making adjustments, you know. We're running, if our revenues aren't looking good or our expenditures are high, then, you know. Then I have to consider doing a, a spending freeze or a hiring freeze, or, or whatever is responsible as, as we move along.
Which we would expect you to do.
But, you know, these things that we're talking about now haven't been negotiated, and it's that I don't think it precludes you from making. A recommendation and voting on it and doing it, and then we have to deal with the ramifications, but if, I don't think. Under that scenario, if it's a, if you're not filling a vacancy, that's one thing, if it's another way, then obviously, you, you're gonna end up doing layoffs and. That has cost associated too, it's not a flat savings of, it's not a flat savings of salary benefits.
No. So I guess that, that, the fact that it's really the obstacle here is what you need to do. Because what I'm hearing is, even if we say go and do that, the likelihood of it being that number on May eighth seems to be remote at this point. I'm just, I think that's.
When I, I, I'm being honest and true when I tell you I'm not chasing a number, but I can't say that for everybody that sits up here, so that might appease some others. If you know where I go.
Yeah, I, I do, but. Well, to answer your question, if we cut two hundred and forty thousand dollars more with the new ninety-seven point seven percent collection rate and the one hundred and fifty thousand. And revenue adjustment, it would be a one point three oh percent tax rate, so if just cut that to get to one three oh, doesn't, yeah.
Yeah, this is kinda simple, like, yeah, what are the other, what are the other negative effects from the town, what other costs could be associated by doing that, I just.
And, and I think again, Jeff has said he needs the people there, I, I agree that if, if this position that we're talking about, if it's coming from. Within, you know.
That department could afford to lose one.
It, it.
If that's deemed.
And, and then you're saying, well, it's, then it's not in the budget, and you might have surplus, and you might, but that would allow you. To not have to make as higher tax rate increase going forward the next time, you know, it's a savings that you have now that you put in the piggy bank and you don't.
But we're not touching the piggy bank.
But if it grows, that's okay, so maybe, maybe, maybe that four percent. That four percent will cover it because we might have something where we might be able to dip in at that point in time, but not currently. I wouldn't do it just for the sake of doing it to get to a no, that just doesn't make sense to me. Um, but if you wind up with a little surplus because you have an open position all year.
Open and honest, one, seven, five, sounds phenomenal compared to what we're walking into, we lost one percent.
Correct.
Basic, that, that, and that's wonderful, and I, I think it's great, I just wanna make sure we're maximizing. Our efforts in financially protecting the tax protection.
And, and, and I think, again, I think the town manager and the management group and Kristin have presented to us. After months and months of going round and round, you know, by the way, this, this budget has absolutely no capital provision in it. I don't like that, we're gonna need some at some point, I mean, there's, something's gonna happen, so. I'm, I'm confident, and you point blank just asked the DPW director, and, and I just, again. It feels like we're chasing a number at this point in time, if we can do this, but it's fair warning, I hope to everybody that this is real. But that still doesn't help you, because, I mean, it was a motion a second and then we didn't vote at all.
We did that twice, we did that twice.
You always vote in second, then you.
Stop saying there's anything else.
Yeah.
Well, I gotta ask, because you never know who's standing up or ready to come with the, something in the end, I just.
And that's my case, what was that?
Any other comment from the public?
I'm done.
Excuse me.
For the third time, I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Taking the motion.
Okay, all right, all right.
Are you approving on the original motion?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, they're the same motion.
And I'm saying, did you stand because you had something, sir?
No, maybe, maybe. Cause he's sorry, I was ready to go.
Please kill him.
Mine too.
All right, I'm gonna take a roll call vote, Jake?
Yes.
Mark?
No.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
I'll vote yes to move forward.
We have to adjourn before the next, I made two motions to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we're gonna be going on to the civic center budget.
Don't stay in the glory.
Civic center is, we're not voting, I think it's just another public hearing.
Oh, Tom, I'm sorry.
A new session on the next.
We're going in session in a second.
To harp on. DPW. Jeff, Jeff, thank you, Jeff, hold on, to harp on Jeff's employer, but your blood pressure was.
Eight twenty-seven PM, fiscal twenty-six public hearing for West Warwick Civic Center. Hi, Laurie.
Good evening.
Roll call taken.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, I'm just noting for the record that, um, Councilman Messier, Councilman Jensen, Council Vice President Langson, and Council President Gosler are here. And, um, Councilman will charge you that, so, form is declared.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, do Laurie.
So, from the workshop to the public hearing, all the same, nothing changed. That's it, that's all I got.
Any questions for Laurie?
Oh, good job over there.
You're gonna start generating revenue for the town.
I do.
No, you go this way and this way, it's zero, zero at the end, but you're gonna start generating revenue for the town.
It's a, an enterprise, that's the rules.
Zero, zero is better than where I was.
No, I know, but.
The rules. I don't follow rules, I don't make the rules.
You don't always follow them, you're the ones.
Any questions for Laurie?
Laurie, are we getting the advertising revenue out of that scoreboard that we were planning on?
Oh, yeah, overwork, man. Very slow at, like, now that I got my money for the scoreboards, he's very slow at responding and working with me.
What do you need to help you get that revenue, just more, more, uh.
I need another Lori, that's what I need.
Is it that, it, it's just, people don't know there's an opportunity?
Yeah, I think it's basically that, and it, it's just coming down to just not having enough time to spend doing that, I mean. Each person that comes in, each organization feels that their organization needs all the money.
Right.
All the time.
So there's no sponsor on that scoreboard yet?
On any of the scoreboards now, would you like to put some sponsorship on? Why do you want? I mean, what's the worst that anyone can say to me is, no, not like that, it's, it was very rarely, but, but.
When you say he is not responsible, who is he?
He is the person that goes on the scoreboards from the company.
Is he supposed to help you with that?
Yeah.
And, what, right, he had, he had people that were.
Yeah, he had people that get you to, I mean, he had a person that you reach out to and go forward.
That's no longer available, or they're just not responsive?
They're just very slow, and they have bigger better, I mean, you know.
To work outside of that person, or is there an agreement where you have to use?
There's no agreement, it's just the sizing and, you know, they have all the stuff and whatnot, so.
So if you went to him with, hey, I've got ABC company that wants to sponsor my scoreboard, he just has to make the sign, like the.
Yeah, don't they get, don't they get?
They get, yeah, they get a percentage of it.
So that should be intended for them.
Should be, so you would think he would wanna maximize his.
And don't they get, break me from, don't they get a bigger percentage in the beginning and then less?
And I honestly have been seriously considering just. Getting a ladder and measuring it and figuring what the sizes would be and getting your own, getting my own.
Have specs that they can give you, and.
I'm sure the, the purchasing file probably has all that, and I, I, I don't wanna get into, I, I would suggest not getting into. Talking about vendor without them being able to be here.
Talk, yeah.
I think some of the problem is, we weren't responsive enough initially to get some things done, so we can't put it all on the vendor. Um, there was some timeliness things that we couldn't be, we couldn't be aggressive. For a, a few reasons in, in getting that done at the time of installation. Um, so it's, it's an ongoing project that needs to get pushed back on the, the front burner.
Unlike the last topic, I didn't even open a can once, um, I just saw the twenty-five thousand, I was like, I, I saw advertising.
So advertising is not only just that though, you know, I mean, I have a mini melt machine in there, we get.
You have the regular banners up there?
Yeah, I have the banners, I have, um, Live Barn.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that, yeah, I mean, and honestly, like, Live Barn is wonderful, and it's also probably the worst thing that could have went in there. I mean, you know, for a high school hockey game, you know, as a grandparent, you used to hug, well, now you can sit at home on your couch and watch the game for fourteen dollars a month. So.
It'll be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you came, you came to senior night, and you were like, where are all the people, I'm like, this is it. And it was senior, I mean, they, just people just don't, they don't come, you know, like, when I first started this job, it was, it was packed in there, but. I mean, each of our own teams are co-ops now, so, I mean, it's just unfortunately, it's just, we. We're losing it to the, the private schools, so, I mean, they all do try very hard though to keep it going and whatnot, and. You know, you can also see like with the leagues, like where COVID came into play at this point, where there's that gap of. People being there, I'm sorry, I'm talking a lot.
So you're.
Can you type on the Zoom button?
I do.
And those are static sources, those aren't gonna fluctuate throughout the year.
No, no, that's a lot of work.
Yeah, the wraps and all this stuff.
Any questions for Laurie? Any public comment on the civic center budget? And lining up.
Yeah, lining up to go out the door.
We're going to vote tonight, don't we usually have a second public hearing for the enterprise one?
There was discussion whether we were gonna do them all on the eighth or not.
Say we got them all on the eighth.
Yeah.
Okay, is that okay, I mean, you don't have any other advertising.
Yeah, and I'd like to mention, Jason, not here, I know tonight we moved one forward, but it wasn't the final hole we got on.
Yes, yeah.
I think mine just goes to a, um, a resolution at this point, right?
Yeah, but I think we should do all three in the same.
Yeah, okay, I thought that's what we discussed.
So don't eat soup in the yard.
Okay.
Correct, correct.
Perfect.
Those might be the ones that. I'll vote for my yard.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nice having, thank you, have a good night.